Council meeting for Monday, August 26, 2019. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." (Singing) "Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee." Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to the alumni of our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move into the adoption of our agenda, oh, sorry, of our meeting minutes from August 12th. We'll start with minutes first. councillor Menhass.
Thank you, Mayor Bill Given. I move the council adopt the minutes of city council meeting held in Monday, August 12th, 2019 as presented.
Thanks very much councillor Menhass. Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct before we adopt those minutes? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. We'll move to the adoption of the agenda. I've got two in the queue and the quick on the draw was councillor Theeson. Councillor Theeson.
I didn't even have my mic pulled up. I would move that council approve or adopt the agenda with the additions of item 7.1, QP agreements, item 7.2, public member appointments, and item 7.3, council endorsement for the mayor to run for a seat on the board of AUMA.
Thanks very much councillor Theeson. Any discussion or debate on the agenda with those additional items? Again, not seeing anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Motion carries as well, and that brings us to our open delegations portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting where anyone can come to council with any community-related matter. We always appreciate it if you let us know ahead of time, but you absolutely don't need to for this session, our evening session. We're moving to a system where the public should be registering ahead of time, and so we can look for that. But we did have one delegation that let us know ahead of time that they were going to come, and that's the County of Grand Prairie with an update on the County Connector Transit Service. Ms. Ladwig, if you'd introduce yourself to those people watching at home and council.
So, good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Cory Ladwig. I'm the team lead for adult senior and community programs with the County of Grand Prairie. I'm also the project lead on the Rural Transportation Pilot Project or the County Connector. I'm here today to share with the City of Grand Prairie Council a project update with data from the first seven months of operation and the results from a rider survey that was administered June 7th to the 28th of 2019. This same report was presented to county council on August 19th and shared with all partners of the project. For information, the Rural Transportation Pilot Project is a two-year operational funding grant provided by Albert transportation with the objective of providing Albertans in rural communities access to public transportation services. The project, the County of Grand Prairie contracts the City of Grand Prairie to provide the service. There is two phases. Phase one has routes 90 and 91, which is a Claremont-Sexmouth route, and phase two, which is Beaver Lodge, Wembley, and Heath, or routes 92, 93, and 94. Is this a little bit better? Perfect. There was a report in your agenda package, but I didn't see it included, so I did print copies and bring them with me today. So if you could refer to those as I'm going along, it will help give you the visuals you need. I'm just going to go through that and go through the different components of it. So the first graph I presented in the report illustrates ridership numbers from December 5th, the start of the program, to June 30th of 2019. Phase one routes, Claremont Route 90 and Sexmouth Route 91 had a start date of December 5th, while the phase two routes, Heath, Beaver Lodge, and Wembley, did not begin operations until February 4th of 2019. So some of the key highlights for the ridership include, and I've just broken it down by route to keep it straight in my own mind. So in March, Route 90, which is a Claremont route, we had the highest numbers of riders. There's a slight dip in ridership in the month of April and then back up in May and June. When we look at the stops that are more popular, the stop in Claremont that are more popular is stop number 912, which is a stop across from the German-Canadian Hall, as well as a stop by our skate park in Claremont and stop 902 at Lakeview Seniors Home. For Route 91 and Sexmouth, the most popular stops on that route are the ones at Heritage Point, which is a seniors facility in Sexmouth, and stops along 100th Avenue. There's two stops there, 928 and 926. The Sexmouth route averages about 44 riders per month. The next route I look at is the Heath route. Again, service for the Heath route did begin in February of 2019, and they saw riders in the months of May and June, and the most accessed stops in Heath was at their community center. Route 93 in Beaver Lodge has an average of 15 riders per month, with stop number 9306 at Amis Court being the most used stop, and had an average of 15 riders per month. Stop number, or Route 94 in Wembley, pardon me, has an average of about 17 riders per month, with the stop by their community hall being the most used. In the City of Grand Prairie, pickup and drop off locations are at the Town Center Mall, Prairie Mall, and the hospital. All stops are used within the City of Grand Prairie, most often at the Prairie Mall and the Town Center Mall. A few changes made in the first seven months of operation was stop number 9304 in Beaver Lodge was removed, and then we added two additional stops in the City of Grand Prairie, one at the City of Grand Prairie Service Center and one at the Paradise Inn. We found that people were wanting to get from Grand Prairie to the stops along phase two routes, so we added that, an addition in the morning, as well as another additional stop in the afternoon, which didn't add any extra cost to the service. So, if you just flip your page, I think the next graph, we take a look at riders by the class of rider, and overall, again, I have it divided by Route 91 and 92, Sexmouth, Claremont, the phase one and the phase two routes. But overall, what we're seeing is the highest percentage of our riders are adults with the system. And even when you break it down per route, it's pretty consistent throughout that. I think Claremont is approximately 80% adults, with Sexmouth being 73% adults, Heath about 55% adults, Beaver Lodge 63% adults, and Wembley had about 77 adults. If you flip the page one more time, this is just where we were kind of breaking it down by days of the week, seeing if there's more ridership on certain days to other days. And what we see here is Claremont and Sexmouth show slightly higher levels of ridership on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and the Beaver Lodge, Wembley, and Heath routes show higher ridership on Wednesdays and Fridays. An important thing to note about the phase two routes for Beaver Lodge, Wembley, and Heath is that there is only service to Heath on Wednesdays, so that will slightly inflate that number. The next graph I provided kind of breaks down the number of trips per route, trips per day on Route 90 and 91, as there's eight trips per day, so kind of looking at, you know, is there some trips that are more popular than others? In the morning, trips one and four tend to be the most popular trips, and in the afternoons, trips two and three tend to be the most popular trips. And, one of the, the next page moves on to revenue and expenses, so this is a breakdown kind of of the costs of the project. So to date, the County Connector Rural Transportation Pilot Project has collected $7,663 in fare revenue and $2,100 in advertising revenue. The total cost of the project to June 30th of 2019 was $190,505. So included in the 2018 and 2019 non-grant related expenses, these were expenses that the county incurred, are some legal fees associated with the project, signage for the county and partnering municipalities. One thing to note in that is we did collect some revenue back from other communities as they were required to pay for their own signage of $907. And that the fare revenue is not reflected in revenue, but the cost of the signage is reflected in the cost of the project, because I wanted to keep them all together. So the last thing I'm going to speak on is our rider survey. We administered a rider survey from June 17th to June 30th. That was part of our reporting requirements for the province. We had a total of 25 surveys collected at that time, and here's just some of the key findings from that. So the majority of the respondents lived within the County of Grand Prairie, and we were able to break that down to where in the county. Two of the respondents indicated that they lived in the City of Grand Prairie. Overall, eight respondents indicated that they would not have another way to get to their destination, and 14 indicated that they might have an alternate way. Other ways that they talked about were walk or cycle, ask a family member or friend, taxi or ride share, and use other public transportation. And I found that one kind of interesting, but when I went further on into the survey, I was able to connect that some people were using it to get to Edmonton. So an assumption I'm making, and it's an assumption, is that they took the County Connector into a bus terminal or some other way to get to a larger center. So reasons people are using the County Connected are listed kind of in order from most indicated to least, as people were able to pick multiple options. So for the most, it was visit family or friends and to attend medical appointments, and then shopping, work, school, college, or other educational institutions and banks, or attend government services. And last, it was groceries, library, Walmart, Edmonton, Claremont, Sexmouth, and other. I think one of the neat findings that we're seeing is that people are using the system to get to some of the other communities. Nineteen of the respondents indicated they were satisfied with the current fare. Five people indicated they were not. Suggestions to improve fares included a monthly rate, student rates, seniors' rates, and a child rate. Suggestions to improvements included, and it's not limited to this, this is kind of my summary, weekend service, 70s a week service, transfers to the city bus, music, a lunch run to Sexmouth, more trips to Sexmouth, service to the Shell, Sportsplex, and other industrial areas. These suggestions are really similar to feedback we've heard from the community members and partners throughout the project, and we're going to continue to meet and evaluate. We will be administering another survey September 9th to 30th that targets both riders and non-riders of the system. So today, I ask that council accept this for information.
Thanks very much, Ms. Ladwig. Certainly appreciate you being here and appreciate the opportunity to hear how the partnership's going so far. Any questions for Cory? Councillor Palat.
Thanks. Thanks, Mayor Given. I do appreciate this a lot. I know it's something we had asked for, and I appreciate you coming in and presenting this forum, and there's lots of good data in here. I'm just wondering, now that we're seven months into it, and just kind of looking at where the ridership seems to be kind of leveling itself out, if there's been talk about maybe reducing the amount of trips, or what they're going to look at doing.
At this time, anything like that will be decided, or suggestions will be taken toward through the Rural Transportation Advisory Committee and then brought forth to councils if we are looking at any of those things.
Okay. And just, I'm not sure if there was kind of hopes or expectations, but just quick math, looks like it's about $127 per rider is what it's costing. Like, has there been kind of, is there a hope of where we'd like to get that cost per rider too, or is there a benchmark for that?
Maybe, yeah, councillor Palat, I guess the other point of reference here would be that this, the operational costs of this program are fully funded through provincial grants or majority funded through provincial grants. Cory, can you give us some details on, and when that runs until?
Yes. So this is a pilot project funded completely for operational grant until December 2020. So at that time, throughout the project, the advisory committee, which is partners from each of the six municipalities, will be reviewing the data and then making recommendations as to next steps from there.
Thank you. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given, and thank you for being here today with this report. I was just sort of thinking to myself that this could be used to bring people into the community as well as take them out to other communities, such as Sexmouth, it has their Chin Chaga Days. That might be something that people would maybe leave Grand Prairie to go to. We have the stomped, we have the folk festival, we have the street performers, and also the local fairs. And I was wondering if that was brought to the table to incorporate that on weekend shifts, or special event days in those communities.
So at this time, it has not any changes to the program. Do need to be vetted through the provincial government as well. So for the purpose of the pilot project, we've just kind of left that. Again, if there is to be any changes, it would be brought forth by the advisory committee to the respective councils.
Thank you.
See anybody else in the queue with questions? Thanks again for being here. Really appreciate, and a great example of the partnership between the municipalities and the region ultimately in the best interest of the residents. So thanks very much for presenting the data.
Thank you for having me.
So, as I said, for this open delegation portion of our agenda, it is an opportunity for anybody to come forward to council on any community-related matter. I don't see anybody else rushing the stage, and so it looks like we may not have anybody else this afternoon, so we will close our delegation session, and we'll move on through unfinished business, which we had none this afternoon, and into those additional agenda items, starting with 7.1, the QP agreement to December 31st, 2021. I don't know if there's an introduction for administration, but I believe the recommendation is for council to approve that agreement. Ms. Walker, do you care to give an introduction?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, the recommendation is that council approve the terms of the collective agreement reached with the Canadian Union of Public Employees Local 787 for a three-year term from January 1st, 2019 to December 31st, 2021. And this is, as I say, a three-year agreement that is within our budget.
Thanks for, Ms. Walker. Any questions or motions arising? I'd look for a motion from council. Councillor Ressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. We'll all make the motion that council approve the terms of the collective agreement reached with the Canadian Union of Public Employees Local 787 for a three-year term from January 1st, 2019 to December 31st, 2021. I think that there was good negotiating and good faith by both parties. I think this is an agreement that's fair both to taxpayers and employees, so I'd encourage council to approve it.
Thanks very much councillor Ressi. Any other discussion or debate? Not seeing anybody in the queue, and before I take the vote, I just want to give my thanks to our negotiating committee that was representing management's interests, and also my thanks to the negotiating committee from the QP side that was representing labor's interests. Appreciate the good working relationship that we've managed to maintain over many, many years, and I think this is a continuance of this and really is built on that strong working relationship, so kudos and congratulations to everybody involved. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and that'll take us to item 7.2. We have a recommendation for a appointment to the Pursuit of Excellence Committee, and I will look to councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the council approve Morgan Reed Dunphy to a term that will expire December 31st, 2020, to the Board of Pursuit of Excellence Committee.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate?
Just like to say that we've had a number of citizens put their applications in, and it was tough decisions, but thank you for everybody that put their name in.
Thanks councillor O'Toole. And councillor O'Toole, as chair of that committee or councillor representative of that committee, do we, is this filling a vacancy, or is there, why did we have this?
We had one person that had to leave town for education purposes, and he moved to Calgary, and we're just filling in a vacancy that this is sort of midterm, so.
Great. Thanks very much councillor. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. I'm sorry, did I click the button too quickly there? I think I did. I'm missing one. I'm sorry. I will clear that, and we will revote. My apologies, everyone. Have to do my math of how many council members are in attendance. My apologies. So I will call for the vote. Please vote. I will wait this time until I see seven, and then I will display the results. There we go. Thank you. Now everybody gets registered. Thank you. My apologies, council, it's too quick on the draw there. Thank you, and that takes us to 7.3. I am seeking a motion of council to support or endorse my running for the Board of AUMA for Director for Cities Under 500,000. I've served two years in that role after being elected, and AUMA rules require anybody who wishes to stand for election at the upcoming convention to get a motion of support from their council. And so council, if you think that it's worth my time to be there, I certainly would appreciate that endorsement, and I can't speak highly enough of the opportunities that AUMA has afforded me and I think our organization by allowing me to serve there. So I would look and see if there's a motion. Again, I have a couple of folks in the queue, and I think councillor Theeson is the first there.
I'm a quick bunny today. I would move that council endorse Mayor Bill Given's intention and purpose to run for the Board on AUMA for a second term. Just speaking to this, I've spoken with lots of our municipal colleagues across the province in various venues and locales, and our mayor has an upstanding reputation as far as, you know, what he brings as far as intelligence, integrity, and passion towards, towards the board table. This is not an exaggeration. In fact, you can quote Buck Buchanan, that Bill, he's a pretty sharp guy, we're lucky to have him. So anyways, I would, I would move that Bill continues this, and just, he's done a lot of work as well on the opioid task force here locally, and also as well as spreading opioid awareness across the province as well. So that's just a small sample of some of the good work he's doing and is able to do on the AUMA board.
Thanks very much councillor Theeson. Councillor Ressi.
Great. Thank you. I'll definitely be voting yes, and I also think it's worth acknowledging that, in my opinion, this is something Mayor Given does that goes above and beyond what's required of him, but it's very good both for our province and for the city. So I'm going to wholeheartedly be voting yes, but I also want to take the opportunity to publicly thank you for the work you do that takes you away from home and away from your family to represent us, so thank you.
Thanks councillor Ressi. Asher Chucks. Thanks very much for that motion. I don't see anybody else in the queue for a discussion or debate, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. I will try to count to seven this time. Thank you. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Thanks very much, and thanks for those kind words to both of you. So that'll take us to committee business, and item 8.1, the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting from August 20th. Can I get a motion to adopt that set of minutes? I think that was probably councillor Clayton, and so who was our other council member that was there? Councillor Friesen, would you care to move that set of minutes of the August 20th committee meeting?
Yes, thank you. So I will move that council approve the minutes of the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting held on Tuesday, August 20th, 2019 as presented.
Thanks very much councillor Friesen, and thanks for stepping in on short notice. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions we need to correct? Not seeing anyone ring in, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. We'll carry on to item 8.2, the Corporate Services Committee meeting. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the council approve the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, August 20th, 2019 as presented.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Again, seeing none, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole.
Yeah, we had just a little bit of Director's Services Area Update by Mr. Scott Smith filling in as the acting Corporate Services Director. He gave us a report on assessment and taxation, the community facility management program, finance, human resources, and the information technology services, as well as procurement department. And with that, we also had a couple of motions that come out of the meeting, and one of them is I recommend council approve the terms of reference for the Complaint Adjudication Committee.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on, I'm sorry, did we, did we make a motion for the minutes? Did we approve the minutes already? Yes, we did. Okay. Good. Thank you. So on 8.2.1, Complaint Adjudication Committee, any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I just note that this is a result of council's recently passed Code of Conduct Bylaw, and at some point in the future, council will be advertising to look for public members who might wish to sit on this Complaint Adjudication Committee. The committee would only act if there was a complaint that was made, but for those members of the public that might be interested, they should keep an eye out on the city's website for opportunities to volunteer on this, on this body as we start to form it. Councillor O'Toole.
And I'm pretty sure we're going to see some, this particular topic come up in later October, November, as we get the board together.
Absolutely. I don't see anybody else ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole.
And I move that council approve Policy 122 as the independent legal advice for council, and number two, receive for information procedure 122.1, the process to seek independent legal advice for council.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, again, I just note that this arises from a recently passed Code of Conduct Bylaw, and with that, I would call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole, anything else you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
We did have the unaudited financial statements as of June 30th, and those are in our agenda. And we also had municipal election rules. I guess you could call it an informal request on some ideas, and I'm sure we'll be seeing those come back later, but at present time, it's just directing administration to look into some of the topics that we discussed.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. So we'll move on to item 8.3, the Community Living Committee meeting from August 20th. Councillor Theeson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held Tuesday, August 20th.
Okay, thanks very much. Any discussion or debate? Errors or omissions, changes we need to make? Again, seeing none, please vote. That motion carries. Councillor Theeson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just one item of business coming out of committee meeting, and that is the Fees, Rates, and Charges Amendment, and I would move that council give three readings to Bylaw C-1395A being an amendment to the Fees, Rates, and Charges Bylaw. Just a little bit of housekeeping from work done previously in the year. The proposed amendments will include a minimum charge on the commercial, industrial, and institutional lock grading fee, as well as incorporate the updates to the Dave Bar childcare fees that were approved in March 2019.
Thanks very much councillor Theeson. And just, I guess for technical sake, we're actually starting with first reading, and so no discussion or debate on first reading, and then we'll move on to all the subsequent readings. You don't get away with just one motion for all these today, councillor Theeson. Please vote on first reading. That motion carries. Councillor Theeson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give second reading to Bylaw C-1395A being an amendment to the Fees, Rates, and Charges Bylaw.
Thanks very much. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing nobody ring in, please vote. That motion carries. Councillor Theeson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading of Bylaw C-1395A.
Thanks very much councillor Theeson. This is a motion to have third and final reading. It must pass unanimously for us to move on to that third and final reading. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Councillor Theeson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give third reading to Bylaw C-1395A being an amendment to the Fees, Rates, and Charges Bylaw.
Thanks very much councillor Theeson. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, please vote. That motion carries as well. Councillor Theeson, anything else to highlight in that set of minutes?
A couple of things to highlight, actually. We did have a delegation come in from the Grand Prairie Curling Center. Mr. Serge Martin and Mr. Haig Sarkisian were representatives of the Grand Prairie Curling Association, and they were Association, and they were there to present an opportunity perhaps for the Curling Club to work in conjunction with the city to help offset some of their operational costs of the building. So administration and council will have those discussions leading up in the future as to what form that may or may not take. Director's Service Area Update, we did get Revolution Place Auto Group to sign on the dotted line for another year for the naming rights to formerly known as Crystal Center, which will now forever know as Revolution Place. And the full version of our Community Connections calendar will be available online and in print later on this month. Also, the Dave Bar Community Center will implement their new toddler childcare service beginning September first, as well as hosting a very successful pickleball summer. They created nine thousand dollars in additional revenue and hosted approximately twenty to twenty-five people per day for the sport of pickleball, which is good news for all pickleball fans in and around the city of Grand Prairie. All sports fields last week and this week have been sprayed for dandelions, and they will be posted as marked for any concerned citizens. And the South Bear Creek Ball Diamonds are gearing up for the Men's Fastball Nationals. Diamond number one infield has been redone with shale. Diamond number two will be done, redone next week, and the score clocks have been installed and are ready for the tournament. We also got to see a bit of a pilot project, not a committee, but of our new lawn mowers that are self-driving, which is pretty cool, and they were working on Diamond One, also preparing for that big tournament. And finally, Transit, our year-to-date ridership as of the end of July is up one point three percent, which equates to roughly just under five thousand riders taking their trips in the city of Grand Prairie. And that is all. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Friesen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I happened to notice that you skipped over my opportunity to give highlights of the IPS Committee meeting, so I would like to do that. There are some things there that I think are quite important to the community. First of note, I know that the community's been very concerned about the Rotary House encampment, the tent city as it's commonly called, and Director Manuel did give us a update, an update on that. Enforcement is requesting periodically that the encampment be cleaned up with twenty-four hours' notice, and, and then if within the twenty-four hours there is anything there by law, our enforcement services does go in and clean out the area, so that does happen periodically. And with, with the utmost respect, as, as they, they certainly try to give the utmost respect to any personal identification or anything that looks of value that's left in the area, so that's important to note. So we are enforcing the bylaw there of no tents. Of course, as the community certainly would know, it doesn't take very long for the tents to come back, though. Last council meeting, we had a delegation come in and they were concerned that Housing First was not housing anyone, so we asked for an update at committee on what Housing First has done over the last little bit, and it was reported back that between April twenty eighth, sorry, April first, two thousand and eighteen, and March thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, one hundred and twenty-six people were actually housed through Housing First, and that eighty-two percent of those remain housed. Twenty-two of them were able to transition permanently just this past summer, so that's, that's pretty good. In that vein as well, it's important to know that our winter emergency response or request for application has gone out, and I think that that is nearing completion. One other note is that RCMP did some mobile check stops last week, or I guess it's the better part of two weeks ago now, and issued a few tickets and a few criminal charges, actually, so about fifteen violations and three criminal charges that were not related to impaired driving, so that was interesting. And I think Mothers Against Drunk Driving was involved in that, and that's an organization that was kind of dormant for a little while, but there seems to be a little, a little wind in their sails again, so MAD is back in Grand Prairie. It's nice to see. And Bandaged Paws, that is operating out of the former SPCA location, is at capacity, so I just want to encourage anyone out in the public who has been thinking about adopting, now would be a really great time to head out there and have a look at, at some pets. As I sit with my daughter's dog, Reuben, with me today, it's great to have a companion, and what better time than to go and try to empty out some of the kennels over at Bandaged Paws? Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Friesen. We didn't have any items of correspondence on our agenda today, I believe, and we could have a motion to receive the presentation on the County Connector six-month update for information. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that we accept that for information.
Okay, thanks very much. Any discussion or debate? Again, seeing none, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I don't believe we had any notices of motion this afternoon, and so we will recess our council meeting and will return for our public hearing portion of our council meeting starting at six PM, or in recess. Thank you.